Christmas.
Hello everyone, can you guys uh hear me see me?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, great, thank you. Are you guys seeing the screenshot now?
Yes.
Yes, see in the screenshot.
Alright, I gotta get a couple of things open on my laptop, so I'll be a couple minutes.
Mayor, I'm here, this is Chief.
Okay.
Marie, if I have to put you on mute, is that star six?
Yes, on your phone.
It's star six to mute and star six to unmute.
I believe so, if you're on the telephone.
Alright, thank you.
Try it. Can you hear me now?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Mayor is just loading a couple of things on his laptop.
Yep, I'll be another minute, I'm getting the livestream on Facebook started up right now as well.
Hey guys.
Hi Deb, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hey Deb.
Right, hey Bobby. Do we have Andy on?
Yep, I just logged on.
Great, hi Andy, long time no see.
Andy.
Yes, hello.
Rob, I am not prepared at all, I literally walked in the door.
Uh, that's alright, take a couple minutes, um, oh, well, welcome back, uh, take a couple minutes.
Yeah, my daughter had a baby.
That's awesome.
Oh, congratulations.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congrats grandpa.
Thank you.
Is outstanding, yeah, check your email, I have um, the majority of the documents in one email. Um, and I have the, I have the agenda along with our PowerPoint, so, uh, tonight. Good sign. Okay, hypothetically, we're going live on Facebook. And then I'll just need one moment, we will begin. There we go. Good, we're live. Alright, bear with me just one minute, and then we'll begin. Okay, um, Marie, do we have all the trustees here that we can tell?
Uh, I think everyone's here, Emily, are you here?
I see Vanessa, I see Deb.
I saw Craig, I'm not sure about that.
I'm here.
I see Kevin and Bobby, Andy, okay, alright, in that case. Um, what's up? Alright, in that case, it is a 6:04, I would like to call this meeting to order. Um, and as always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please take this moment right now to mute your microphone, and also your video, uh, if you want, as the standing up part is option, as offered, but here we go. For the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much, I'd like to start with the roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Alter.
Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Marpy.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Pine. Also President Attorney Gilchrist.
Yes, present, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marie, uh, just a quick standard review, uh, as we have done in the previous meetings, when you're not speaking, please remember to mute your audio, you're encouraged to use headphones, ideally with headphones and microphones, there's no feedback loop, and if two or more of you are watching the meeting in the same room, make sure only to have one person's audio on, or we will be having some crazy loops. Okay, uh, at this point, I'd like a motion to open up a public hearing, uh, for local law number three.
Motion.
Thank you Vanessa. Second, second Kevin, thank you, so we are officially into the public hearing for local law number three, this is the local law establishing rules and regulations for the keeping of chickens in the village of Husick Falls. Um, as standard for public hearings, we will remain open for at least thirty minutes, you can speak now or later about it. Anyone who wishes to share may do so, ask questions etc. about local law, number three. Uh, and a reminder that all of our meetings are recorded and archived, and when you introduce yourself to speak, please say your full name and street address. I will get the local law straight up on the screen, before I do, uh, is, I'd like to open up the floor and get an idea of who would like to speak, uh, regarding local law number three, so if you're interested in speaking, just say I'm interested in speaking and say what your name is, so we can, uh, get it.
Interested in speaking, Harold Stevens.
Okay Harold, anyone else?
Interested in speaking, Casey George.
Thank you Casey. Anyone else? Alright, in that case, um, why don't, uh, why don't we start Casey with you? Uh, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I live at Three Mechanic Street, um, we currently have chickens and ducks, uh, we rent here. Our landlord gave permission for us to get the birds before we did, um, so I was not aware that there was a local law stating that we could not have them in town, um, or in the village, so we got these birds, um, as, at the request of our four children, uh, during the quarantine of COVID. Um, they had requested, you know, their world was kind of falling apart at that point, nobody was in school, um, things were a little scary, so they had requested, um, the four, our four girls are fifteen, twelve, ten, and nine, and they had requested that we get chickens and ducks to take care of, so, um, you know, to have some responsibility and, um, to have a project during school being out, um, so we, we did that. Um, we put them together, they are enclosed, they are, um, taken very well care of, they're not a nuisance to traffic because they are not loose. They, um, there, we have no neighbors on either side of our house, um, one end is the old factory and on the other end is the bridge, so we have nobody. Um, so, I know, um, there was talk about, when I heard about all of this, which is why I logged in today, um, we were told that chickens would be okay, but the ducks wouldn't, so I was interested in, um, possibly seeing if we could change that too, because I get it, if there's another house in the village that has neighbors, or due to odor, or noise, or anything, we have nobody. Um, there's nobody anywhere near us, so I didn't know if there was any changes that could be made to that, I don't know a ton about this, so, I'm kinda just.
Yeah, sure, I can, I can answer that, and thank you Casey, uh, for your, your honesty and opennessness and for logging in. Um, at this point, with the way procedures work in municipal law, this is the local law that we're putting up right now, so, I don't think in any way we could actually change this, at this point, we're putting up hearing, uh, public comments, and then maybe we make a decision now or later to approve or not approve this as a, as a current local law. If we did end up doing, uh, something like adding ducks, it would require a separate law, which would go through the long procedure of discussions, putting it together, running it through our attorney, running it through our code enforcement department, uh, for opinions on enforcement, which is all the stuff that we did, uh, with this local law. Um, so, uh, I, 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 all the reasons that you, uh, expressed in having, uh, chickens and ducks are a lot of the reasons that came up when, uh, the group of us sort of worked to put this together, um, so I, it sounds to me like, uh, you were for supporting this. Um, okay, any other, any other thoughts, questions?
So, I'm, I'm not really sure, I guess, so the chickens, it looks like are fine, it's the ducks that are the issue, so, um, I guess moving forward, just how could we change it so that we could keep the four ducks, the girls have had them for ten months now. Um, you know, I would hate to say, oh, we're just, we should have to get rid of them, um, so I'm not really sure moving forward what to do.
I'm gonna have to speak with our code enforcement officer and probably follow up with you on that.
Okay.
Um, but the new local law, uh, does have some restrictions on, uh, and rules on enclosures, and, um, we have a limit of, of no more than six hens, we have some specifics about the chicken coops, sizes, and runs, and so on and so forth, and there's some requirements on, um, um, basically, uh, checking in with the building departments and having things checked over and getting permits and such, so, uh, that's just, uh, if this law does go online, you definitely go on, reach out to code enforcement anyway, just to, uh, explain the situation and try to get things squared away.
Okay.
Rob, I wanna say that in, in regards to Casey, I, I, you know, I drive by all the time, and there, I, I think her coop is definitely in compliance with our projected law, so I don't think that's an issue, actually, the duck, duck enclosure and the chicken enclosure are very similar.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong Casey.
Thanks Bobby, no, they are, we bought the, we bought the chicken coop as a, as a chicken coop, um, but we actually found the design for the duck coop online, had it, you know, measurements, my fiance and, and his best friend built it, um, so yeah, so they should all be within standard. There are six hens for the chickens, we have no roosters, and then currently just the four ducks in the separate enclosure, but yes, thank you, I, I believe they are up to code.
No problem.
And, and Mayor, if I could, I just, just wanna make the record clear procedurally, when you said earlier, this is the law that that's been proposed, that's correct. But if the board receives comments during the public hearing, and as a board, it does have the ability to make substantive changes to the local law, but then it would need to be reintroduced in a new public hearing held on the amended local law, so while you said that this is the local law that's being offered, that's correct, and the board has every ability to act upon this local law in its current form and later amend it, I just wanna make it clear that you do also have the procedural abil- ability to make substantive changes, and then reintroduce and, and have an additional public hearing on the changed law at this point, that, that's a procedural option to you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Andy. Alright, uh, Harold, you'd, uh, wanted to speak?
Yes, Harold Stevens, six-three, Wilder Avenue, yeah, I'm looking over the law, and, you know, part G and part H effectively rule out almost everybody in the village from having chickens. You know, with your, uh, lot size, uh, saying that they can't be within a hundred feet of a stream, or, uh, pond or river, effectively that, uh, rules out everybody, so I was just, why, why bother with it?
So we had, we had looked at a lot of this, and we had had discussions, and I, I don't think that what you're saying is correct.
Well, you're saying that, uh, you must have a five hundred, uh, square feet of, uh, space in your backyard. There's very few houses in the village that have five hundred feet of backyard space.
Yeah, now, so, we, uh, there has to be a certain, uh, amount of distance away from the property line. Uh, you can't have things close to streams, which only affects a few properties, I mean, we have a river, but you still can't be up against the river. But there are situations where, um, there is some flexibility built in, and there's some, um, deferment to either the building department, or if I'm not mistaken, I feel like something can go in front of one of the, uh, boards, right, Andy, can you help me with that, or Mark?
Uh, yeah. Yep, it's, uh, Andy Gilchrist here. The initial discretion with the building department as drafted, and, uh, there is the minimum square footage in the rear yard of five hundred square feet, but the law is written so that if that cannot be met, then the, uh, side yard can be considered, but that's at the discretion of the building department, and the building inspector would go, go out there and just view the property, that the only limitation is no front yard, so it, it is set up to have some discretion with the building department.
Yep, and even at that, you know, the number, especially in the second ward, you know, most houses are just too damn close together to have them either in the backyard or in the side yard.
Yeah, and that's actually something that came up both in our discussions and also our discussions with Mark, and that's why we wanted to first off, build in flexibility, uh, and also build in the flexibility of multi-unit buildings, of which there are a lot in second ward and, and the village. Uh, if both occupants agree and, and get the permission, they can, they can still have the chickens in their yard, and again, uh, for lot sizes, um, the discretion falls on the, the building department, uh, as it's currently written in the law.
Okay, you know, and here again, you know, speaking with, uh, of Casey here, just talking about hers. Uh, she's got a beautiful setup there, when you drive by it and see it, but that falls within the hundred feet of the river.
No, that's not anywhere near within a hundred feet of the river.
I think you're, that's. I think if you measure.
Where Casey's at?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Casey, are you still on by chance?
Yes, yes I am.
Uh, your property is?
Three Mechanic Street, so belongs to James Brown, we're right across from the old, um, baseball fields, um, by like the, so, directly across from us is the street and then the river, but there's the, the cement wall, we are nowhere near the water.
Yeah, but you're within a hundred feet of it.
No. I'm looking at the real maps right now, I think there's at least about sixty feet between the edge of her property and where the actual river is, when you consider the road, the wall, and then the ground on the other side, probably more.
And, and then they're not directly up against the sidewalk, they're back away, so I would, I, I think, I mean, I think we're okay.
Well.
Well, it's good to hear Casey.
So, is, is this really relevant to the discussion of the chicken law?
It was just talking about the hypothetical about the, um, the hundred feet, and if that's a legitimate, uh, um, if that's alright, or if that's, it could be an issue.
Yeah.
But yeah, point taken Craig, Harold, did you have anything else you wanna bring up?
No, that's it.
Anyone else, uh, out there would like to speak, offer comments on this?
So, Rob, I, I wanna go back to what Cassie brought up, and, um, it just kinda sparked me to look back at the law here, and do we define what a chicken is and what it is not? I mean, I, I, this is a stupid way to ask the question maybe, but are Guinea hens chickens? No, they're not, but is somebody gonna come and wanna know that answer? And do we need to define what this law does and doesn't cover more than it currently does?
Well, to, to the question on, on Guinea hens, I, we reviewed a whole bunch of laws, I never saw that brought up, I'm, I don't, I don't even know what a Guinea hen is.
Looks like a chicken. Tastes like chicken.
Does a squawk and laugh like a chicken?
It does.
So at this point, then, could we say that we table this for some consideration, and maybe that be the point where we could add the ducks or not, or, you know, to kinda give it more consideration?
And my concern is kinda, I'm on the fence about the chickens to begin with, but as, you know, if it gets broad and wider and wider, then you know, somebody else will have pheasants, are they okay?
And, and yeah, and, and Craig, your, your point is, is definitely what I heard from a lot of people. Um, there are typically three or four things that people were worried about when it was a chicken law on it, and, uh, the first one was, uh, if you allow chickens, what's to stop you from allowing, enter, you know, new animal, new animal, new animal, um, and I think this was, um, this law was a specific choice made to just do chickens. Uh, and all the chickens right now.
Does it exclude other things?
Specifically, the law only allows for hens, not roosters, and it is only specific to chickens, and it does not change any other animals that could, uh, or could not be, um, acceptable, is that right Andy?
Yes, Craig's correct, th- there's no provision in here that says all other birds are excluded, but the way the laws are interpreted is only that which is permitted is allowed, so they're written in the affirmative, not the negative, and this one is written so that only chickens are allowed to be kept. Kevin's, or Craig's, uh, comment is correct in that it doesn't specifically define chicken, so there, there could potentially be issues about what's included. A lot of laws that were reviewed, uh, likewise do not define chicken, but it's a point well taken, that, that be added. Specific finding a definition that meets the board's, um, desire to have that term defined, that could be added.
I, I was kinda just thinking out loud, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we need to do any of those things, but
Right.
But since the issue got brought up, but.
No, that's alright, and that's, that's fair, and that's what we're, that's what we're here for, and there's nothing saying that we have to make a decision either way tonight, we could simply table this, wait a month, revisit it, um, or we can, you know, scrap it completely and try to come up with more specific language, or we can pass it, it's gonna be up to us.
If, if not more specific, more, more general, or more open verbiage, for example, wha- what is, what prevents us from making it for foul? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if you were talking a duck, or a chicken, or a Guinea hen is gonna fall under the category of a foul, correct?
You're gonna have to change the rest of our zoning law, because within our zoning law specifically states that foul is considered, um, farm animals and farm animals are not permitted in the village.
But isn't there a pig living in town? Would that be considered a farm animal, 'cause there, I mean, there, and, and I don't, not that I have any issue with it, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but there's a pig living in town, so I'm just not sure the nuisance of a chicken versus a duck, I, I feel like they're very similar.
Also ducks living in town.
So, yeah, so I guess that's kinda my question.
Soon as we get this law hammered out.
Mark, what was that last statement?
Uh, you're, we're breaking up, Mark, couldn't hear quite what you said.
I'm sorry, I said there's also ducks living in town. I said we'll deal with them all, once we get the chicken laws figured out here. You know.
So can I just ask, are you, oh, sorry, sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I think there, there might be some goats somewhere, I think I've heard, you know.
In the village?
People do a pretty good job hiding stuff, so.
Oh no. So if we square away the chicken thing, i- if that's just what this is about, and then the ducks could be something later, and that wouldn't be an issue currently, like, I, I just wanna be clear, so I'm not doing anything wrong.
Yeah, it would have to be something that would be decided later, it would have to go through the same local law process of it, um, being constructed and then introduced at a meeting, and then the following meeting would be a public hearing, and then so on and so forth, so, it's a long process.
Well, you might be able to amend this law to include them.
If the board wanted to include it. And I don't.
Yeah, I was gonna interject that maybe now would be the time, if this is gonna be an issue. I don't know if pigs can be included or goats in this whole law, if that's the intent, but I mean, either narrow it down or make it wider, rather than doing three local laws, 'cause we know our zoning law right now would have to be revamped as well. So, that's just my thought.
And, and I, I understand, and I will tell you that if we decide, which is fine, as a board to, to increase this, to include, uh, ducks or goats, this is, then I would be strongly against moving on this, and I would wanna table it, uh, and, and probably open the public hearing, and because the, the community has been under the impression that this was only for chickens at this point. And that's fine, if that's the way the board wants to go, but I would expect, um, from some of the comments that I have heard, that there may be more pushback and less support in the community for going past just allowing chickens at this point.
I agree.
To, to that point, Rob, what, how many people have had, had a, a, addressed this issue with you? Is it a handful, or are they many, or, 'cause I've had no one ask, say anything to me regarding you?
Yeah, and it's, it's a, a ton of attention here, like, when the girls are outside doing the birds, everybody stops and asks about them, and seems to be really interested, like, we've never had any complaints to us directly, so, again, this was all kind of news to me.
Um, I've had a few people, um, I remember when I started, uh, as mayor, uh, the, apparently, a, a couple, a mayor or two before me, uh, the issue of trying to get a chicken law came through and was very divisive. Um, I think the climate is different here, because I've spoken to most people who are for it, uh, but I have had a couple people who, who were expressing concerns, and their concerns were almost always, it starts with duh, it starts with chickens, and then becomes other animals, and other animals, and other animals, and that leads to more concerns about enforcement, more concerns about noise and nuisance issues, and, uh, further animals coming into the village and that sort of thing. So that's just, that's just, those are my, my things to share, Kevin, did you have something you wanna say?
I, I did, the one that, uh, I really had an issue with is the multifamily, uh, with written permission on the property, and then it goes on to say on the next page that uh, shared use of chicken coops and/or chicken runs can, uh, between tenants of the same family property as permissible. I just think if you're gonna let multifamily properties, uh, have chickens, you're gonna open up a can of worms with a lot of people that, uh, live in multifamily dwellings are, move from year to year, and, uh, who's gonna take care of the chickens, once those people move on, and they can't move them to somewhere else, and that kinda thing. I just think, uh, if someone's renting a home, or a, uh, a homeowner should be the only ones that, uh, should be allowed under our local law.
Well, I don't know about a homeowner, not, not necessarily a homeowner Kevin, a single family residence, I think.
Correct.
Right, not a multifamily dwelling, I, I, I agree, I, I'm not, I'm in favor of that either, but a single, single family dwelling, someone who's renting a house should be able to have, I feel, and, that be able to have chickens, or whatever, I mean, I'm not, I, I'm definitely not in favor of pigs, or goats, or sheep, or, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, chickens, and, and if we have to address the ducks, we can, but I mean, that's how we started out, like Rob said, with the chickens, and I thought that's what we're sticking with, and, uh, but that's how we started out, like Rob said, with the chickens and I thought that's what we're sticking with and uh, but I I I'm not opposed to ducks, but I'm definitely not in favor of the the pig, the pig issue or goats, if there is any of that. Cause then we're, we're getting into all sorts of enforcement issues.
Plus, is it, is it's a little vague with the uh, the multifamily. So if there's two or three apartments, then they all want chickens. Can they all have uh, the limit or can they each have four chickens in their, their run?
So we talked about that and the language for that, for the multi-family is you have to have written permission from the property owner and from all other units. So if you have a three or four unit um, building and three out of the four are good with it and one is not, you cannot have uh, the the chickens there. So that was something we wanted to be clear on. And the limit of six still applies regardless, uh, and specific to the property. In fact, um, it's the the rule is written, so no more than six hens should be allowed on these lots. So regardless of the fact that it's a multi, you can't have twenty-four hens because you have four families there. You you're still limited to the six. It's just that you're sharing duties. Um, and you're you're sharing the space and usage and everyone has to be on board with it, or you can't do it.
Yeah, I just think it's gonna be tough for the building inspector too. So if he's dealing with uh, the residents and he has to deal with the landlords in like those situations. What if he can't get, I mean, it happens now with different uh, issues. We had the landlord as an absentee landlord. How is he gonna address that with them and when they're not even here?
Yeah, it's a fair point. There's no, I mean, there's no question that this is gonna make a little bit more work for our glorious, wonderful, amazing, genteel code enforcement officer. Um, but we 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 knew that coming in and and he's, he's been a good supporter about that and he knew it coming in too. Um, but there is no, I I I understand your point. I don't think there's a perfect scenario where everything is going to work because there are gonna be people who don't handle um, this, you know, for every seemingly case here who seems to be doing everything right for the right reasons and handling responsibly, we're gonna have situations where it's not handled. Um, and that is gonna fall on uh, Mark. Um, and it may also require some village resources to get the chickens out of there, find new homes somewhere else outside the village in the town or or so on.
Is it possible, um, when, I, we talked last time about having to go, if you want chickens, you have to get a permit. Um, is it, is it, could have, could we make a different kind of permit? If it's for multifamily housing, like everybody in the building or the landlord or whoever has to sign off on it instead of just the one family?
Andy, Mark, what are your thoughts on that? And would that need to be codified in the law?
Uh, I'll give you my thoughts on that. First, with multifamily, uh, the law is already written so that it's uh, requires written permission from the property owner and all units. So that that's already written in there. The permit requirement right now is consistent regardless of single family or multifamily. It's all with the building department and it's an administrative permit review process. This is not written so that there's any other, let's say, planning board review, special use permit review. That's not in the current law. It could be. You you could entertain that, but it's not currently in there. It's not been proposed.
Well, if somebody came in who lived in a multifamily house, in order for Mark to issue the permit, he'd have to have all those signatures.
Yep, there would need to be.
So it's already implied.
Yeah, it's, well, more than implied. It's stated in there, written permission from the property owner and all other units on the property and that's gotta be in the record uh, submitted to Mark before the, the permit could be issued.
Yeah, what what about the adjoining property owners? I really don't care much about the landlord. Because like Kevin said, they could be absentee landlords, not even living in the community and the other tenants in the property. But if you're living next to a rental property that has multiple dwellings and there, they wanna put chickens right next to your property line, I I think that's an issue to be addressed. That should be addressed in there as well. That's, that's definitely a sticking point for me.
Yeah, and I I I know we, we talked about the possibility of 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 requiring permission or getting permission or just getting written notification to the neighbors in the adjoining yards. And I think what we ended up deciding with this uh, was that it has to be uh, at least twenty feet from the property line, so you can't just have it up against the property line with the neighbor. Um, but I I I think apart from that, I don't think there were any requirements about um, getting permission from the neighbors. Is that correct, Andy Mark? There were, there were no other requirements in this writing?
No, that's correct. It's just a a lot by lot application to the building department.
And I think this was one of the issues and I, and I think they, they did a fair job in drafting this because it was an issue, especially for second ward, the first time around when we were talking about uh, the chicken law where it really didn't go anywhere. That was an issue, but I I think they've kind of addressed that and you know, we probably really won't know until we get into it a little bit and start, you know, giving out some permits, what what kind of uh, issues we we may be raising, but chickens really are, for the most part, are you know, I don't see them as much of an issue. The rooster's definitely become an issue, but the chickens, I don't see that as an issue. As long as they're taken care of and that's part of where the code enforcement comes in because where the issues can't come in and I think where the, the argument was originally was the, not so much the noise worry, the smell, the people not taking care of them. And that's where code enforcement is gonna come in, you know, uh, that's, that will make itself pretty obvious pretty quick if somebody's not taking care of them. And I think there is language in there where the code enforcement officer can revoke uh, the permit.
Yes.
Plus, you've got the yearly inspection too. They have to update the permit every year. So that's, that's an inspection that would take place.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Well, someone's not happy with the law. I heard that. Alright, I'm gonna leave the public hearing open for a while in case anyone else um, hops in and wants to speak up. Let me get back to um, my sharing and we'll, we'll close it again later, but thank you everyone for comments. Um, and and for thoughts on this and I I'm interested to see what, where we go with this later in the meeting. Alright. Yep. Okay, announcements. First off, we do have a village board member stepping down uh, on behalf of the village. I would like to thank Vanessa Lewis for all of her service to the Board of Trustees. Um, Vanessa unfortunately has followed the um, Brian Buscher approach to life and found a great house after years of searching, but it just happened to fall outside of the village line. So state law are, I don't know if it's municipal law, state law, but our law requires that you have to be within the village to be on the village board. So Vanessa, uh, thank you so much for, for hopping in. Um, and and for wanting to stay on and I know in all of the crazy things going on in your life and in your family's life, uh, you were still able to give attention to the village. Uh, and we just really appreciate that and thank you for your time. Uh, very much, Vanessa.
Yes, I'm very thankful for the opportunity that the board's given me over the years. Definitely learned a lot of things I had no clue about before. I'm sad that I moved out of the village, but I'm still super pumped to live in the town of Housick Falls and we're definitely on the up. Downtown looks great, new businesses coming.
Yeah.
The board's got it down and just thank you for everything and I'll miss you all.
Awesome. Thank you, Vanessa. I wish we could do this in person. I'm sure we'll uh, we'll see and we'll do some fist bumps or elbow bumps or something, but thank you very, very much.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
You too, Vanessa.
Merry Christmas.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Hi Vanessa.
And uh, at this point, I just want to say right now, I'm, I'm, the seat will remain unfilled. I hope to have um, someone to appoint in the January twenty twenty-one meeting. I actually have had um, a a couple of names sent my way. Uh, Kevin sent me one, Dev sent me one, so I want to have some conversations uh, with those people and hopefully we'll be able to appoint. If you are interested in um, being appointed to the village Board of Trustees, you can also reach out to the village office or trustee who will get that passed on to me. Alright, a couple more announcements. The Hocka Holiday Food and Fun Drive is going on. The goal is to raise six, six thousand dollars, sorry, to help provide over four hundred holiday food boxes to those in need in our community. Uh, Toys for Tots boxes are still uh, happening in the lobby of the municipal building. We're still taking donations. It can be dropped off, but they must be unwrapped when they are dropped off. You can leave them in the main lobby and the police have been awesome at taking those in. Uh, we're still looking for two additional members for our zoning board. Uh, I want to offer a huge thanks to everyone involved in the festival of trees this year. Um, the village looks beautiful. The trees look absolutely uh, awesome. Maybe it's just because everything around has been so, so dark and frustrating this year, but I just, it was such, um, it was such a nice, um, it just, it just was, it was very uplifting to to see all of the trees uh, around the village. It looked really great. So there's a lot of people that need to be thanked, Who's Rising needs to be thanked, Jeremy Colas Crew, all the volunteers who came out and ended uh, and helped out with that, all the businesses who adopted a tree. The Village Highway Crew who uh, did a lot of help and are continuing to help as trees fall over, they're fixing them up. Thanks to Jim Sutton Landscaping for the donation of the trees, for the village, uh, as well as the big tree in the gazebo, which also looks absolutely wonderful. And thanks to Denise Judy and Marie for decorating fences in the village as well as the front of the municipal building. Uh, everyone's great efforts has made the village a bit brighter. I would say more than a bit brighter for the season. I say it looks beautiful. Alright, uh, we don't have any presentations this meeting. I do have a few updates I want to pass on. First off, I have gotten caught back up. All of our board meeting recordings, audio and video are online on the Village of Housick Falls YouTube page. Just search for Village of Housick Falls and it will come up as one of the channels. Um, that does include every one of our previous Zoom meetings, which is really, really helpful and easy to throw those up online. So that's great. Uh, second thing, uh, we had um, last meeting talked about and approved some work to be done uh, at the um, landfill leachate pump. Um, this is work we had um, uh, approved and talked about and this is all uh, related to getting the, the pump working again. Um, the work happens, uh, it it went pretty well. Uh, there were a few things within the scope that they ended up actually not needing to do. And there are a couple additional things that they um, are asking and we've gotten the recommendation from Mark Mills, Paul Stirling, Environmental, as well as DEC who was onsite on the day when the work was being done, um, to to get done and uh, uh, trustees, I I sent out a second email that uh, was the new proposal. Um, and if you look at that new proposal, um, it includes items one and two, which are already done. It took out two items that didn't need to be done and that was a difference of ten thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars that we didn't have to spend from the original scope. Um, the new items that we are looking to have done, which is to regrade the area around the pump. Um, and that's not something that we can do ourselves because it involves the landfill leachate and hazardous chemicals. Uh, and the second thing we want to do is we want to move that panel where all the electronics are mounted right by the pump. Um, and just, just do kind of a one over on all the electric uh, work there. And that proposed work is eight thousand nine hundred and ten, which means we're actually saving money, but there could be other things that come up. So that's the, the quick version of that. Andy, is there anything else you wanted to add to that? Cause I know you've been a part of that as well.
Uh, no, there's not. You covered it very well and uh, on the electric, by a margin, it's not only upgrading the electric, but elevating it so that there's no potential for, you know, an additional water getting in there and causing electrical problems with the operation of the pump and uh, that's within the proposed change scope, so.
Yep. So that's all that is and we have that in the new business later, but I just want to make sure you guys are aware. Trustees, you have any questions on that? And if you do have any questions, just interrupt me. Alright, the third thing is we are in um, works right now with Spectrum to get high-speed internet down Waterworks Road. Now, um, the impetus for this is that um, when we got the new highway garage, we wanted to get some high-speed internet there. Um, they don't have high-speed internet down Waterworks Road. There's no cable access down there because there was no reason for them to run it down there. Um, in talking, we could actually change, right now we have some very shady DSL. I think the water plant has a, a specific cellular approach to data because they couldn't get cable modem down there. Um, but the basic gist is we have two options uh, with Spectrum on how to do this. Option one would be to run um, coaxial cable modem, like our starting cable modem, down the road. Um, we would actually end up wiring in five particular spots and there's a reason for that. Every location that you wire in and that you have bills for, it reduces the installation cost that they charge by five thousand dollars per location and that's an important thing, um, which we'll talk about in a minute. The five locations would be the old highway garage, the new highway garage, the water plant, we would change how we do internet there, which our water um, operators are very happy at the prospect of doing that. Um, and then the other two locations would likely be something like the fields where the softball, baseball and the football fields would have access to the internet. Uh, and possibly the greenway, which would allow us to have some security cameras uh, down there, which is something we had talked about, but didn't have the ability to do. Now with those five locations, it reduces the construction costs, I want to say by five thousand each, that's twenty-five thousand and the construction, I'm trying to find the actual notes here. The construction cost was something like twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand, so it would only be one or two thousand dollars. Um, but then you would also have five sites of billing, which is probably gonna be about eight hundred dollars a month for all of those locations. Now, that does mean and that there will be some phone lines we add or take away that will remove some of what we pay right now at the various places if we do this. That's one of the proposals we're looking at. The second approach is instead of running coax all the way down the road, we run fiber to the first location, which would be the new highway garage. Um, then it would be on us to network in the other locations however we want and everyone shares the fiber run. The initial cost for that is higher. It's more like thirteen and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, but the monthly cost is almost cut in half because it's just one service. But we also have to do whatever networking and additional follow-up that happens there. I just want to make you aware that that's something we're looking at. We're nowhere near ready to, to fi- fine tune this. Denise, um, and I have been working at at this and and Spectrum has been really helpful. We're just trying to figure out the best way to get internet um, and phone in all of these locations. Trustees, any questions on that?
Have you considered Verizon Files? Cause I know Files runs up on Main Street, up on top of the hill right before um, the highway garage.
We did, but there is no plan from Verizon to go down that area. And that, that's the problem we've always had. There's never been a reason for them to go down, but now that we're talking with Spectrum, they're open to it, but Verizon has never been open to it.
Where would the money come from if we move forward on it down in the future?
Um, Denise and I talked about that. This would be something that if we moved on it, it would be built into the next budget. We wouldn't be doing this in the next couple of months. We'd be playing it out over the next couple of months, but we would have to build this into the budget. The, the one-time installation fee would be a bigger thing, but then we would have to look at how much are we paying for various phone lines and internet right now? I know the water plant, I want to say, has three phone lines plus uh, a data or two. The highway garage has two phone lines and a, and a data, so right off the bat, there's several hundred dollars there a month. Um, we just have to sit down and and look at what's the cost savings versus what's the increasing cost and is it worth it? Denise, do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's correct, Rob. I did have a chance to talk to Bob Murphy from BNL today quickly about
Oh, thank you.
We might be able to get it to be approved under one of the Greenway grants that we have for the security along the Greenway Trail.
Yeah.
I don't really know. We didn't get a, a chance to go into it in depth. I don't know if the grants we currently have could be revised to include it under the ones we have now. He said there are grants out there that have been awarded for the same purpose and he's thinking that funding opportunity is gonna be open again, maybe in, you know, the spring of twenty-one. Of course, that's down the road, but I don't know how quickly this is gonna move either, so it's something I'm, we're gonna be having more conversation about too.
Yep. Anything else?
I think we should have a, I think we should have a conversation with the, the State Public Service Board about why Verizon came in and only did half the village or less than half the village and see if the, it was a government-funded program to see if they can come back and finish the rest of the village.
That's a really good question because when I was, uh, where I live personally in the village, um, I was actually, I got the run-on from Verizon, uh, over three or four different calls with different people, each saying a different thing. And finally, I got them to admit that two houses down on High Street is where the line is. But there had no plans on going up where we were and I think that may have something to do with where Spectrum is versus Verizon is. I don't know, Kevin. But that is a frustrating thing and that's a good point.
Well, they did my street, Rogers Avenue, they did Griffin Avenue, they did uh, certain areas as they went through town, but they didn't do uh, the downtown area, which a lot of business owners were uh, looking forward to it and they never got it.
Yeah, and I I don't know why, but I'm, I'm, I was very frustrated by it. Yeah. And I, I don't know why, but I'm, I'm, I was very frustrated by it. Um, I have one more update that I forgot to put on the agenda, but, um, I did want to say, and this is a reiteration of last month's meeting. Uh, in terms of the new water supply, um. D E C in the next, uh, probably week, uh, or so should be putting out their. Final version of the report of the municipal water supply study, which are the options for the future water source. That will start a comment period of either thirty or sixty days. Where residents look out on municipalities, whoever, uh, can comment on what they think is the best option. And somewhere at the end of that, uh, a decision will be made, but I know that's been something that we've been waiting on. Um, that was something I think was. Probably in a non COVID year would already have been, um, the report would be out. Things would be decided. We had that presentation. I think it was in the last, um, CPWG meeting that they talked through and, and answered questions or two meetings ago about. Uh, the most recent data, but that's where we are in terms of the, um, water supplies. I know that has a couple of people have been asking about that. All right. Finally, COVID nineteen. I have a lot of things to say about this, um, and I, I have a few things I want to talk through, but I think it's. Really important, and I think it's probably some of the most important things that I'm going to say tonight. As a village, uh, leader and as someone who has been watching this very, very closely. I'm starting at the point where we as rural America have a very different experience of COVID nineteen versus what urban city experiences have been. Across this, uh, state and across this country. Uh, we've been seeing, um, we've had a very different experience. Um, we haven't had hotspots here. Um, we're nestled, uh, right near the border of, of three states. Um, our, our closest city is Troy. We just haven't seen. What a lot of things that are, that you're seeing on the national news are, it's been very, very different. Um, and this whole year has been dominated by not just the pandemic, but the politicization. Of the pandemic in all different facets, and I think everyone is, is beyond frustrated about it. And all of this points to. COVID fatigue. And the reason I'm bringing this up is right now with the state of where things are at in our region, we absolutely one hundred percent cannot grow lazy. About all of the things we need to be considering with COVID nineteen. Right now across the country, cases are hitting all times highs that have not been seen, even surpassing. The worst days of the March and April wave. Hospitalization numbers in locations and regions across the country and states are hitting record numbers. Uh, and they have not, um, seen, uh, in, in a lot of these parts of the country, and a lot of the hospitals are becoming. Overwhelmed. The quotes from the leading health experts are not good, and they are all talking about the dark days ahead. Something that has been forecasted for several months. The post Thanksgiving bump in cases and hospitalizations is very real. We're seeing that on a national, state and regional way. And there is even more concern about Christmas and New Year's and that whole time off. But again, I talked about how this rural experience has been different than the national news in the cities, which is why I want to focus on where we're at. Regionally. Rensselaer County is seeing record number cases and it has been for a few weeks. If you go back to November twenty second, the week of the twenty seconds to twenty eight. These were the days that were recorded eighteen twenty eight, a new record of forty three, thirty six, thirty eight. Sixteen was actually Thanksgiving and forty. It was a hundred ninety nine new cases. Uh, that week, we had not hit, uh, I don't, I think we maybe hit the thirties once or twice this entire time. Um, but we hadn't had that much. The next week is when things exploded. Twenty three, a new record of fifty seven, forty one, fifty one, a new record of seventy two, a new record of seventy four. A new record of seventy seven, and the cases basically doubled in a week. This week, we're three days in, and I don't even know if they posted it, but I got information from the county that said that today's numbers. Were seventy nine, which is again, a new record. Uh, and this increase that we're seeing in the county matches a lot of the counties around us and not matches a lot of the regions around us. The data is very clear on this. Now specifically in the Housick Village and Town, we have been averaging one to two cases a day. For about the past week or two. Um, it has been very concerning. I, I'm getting the regular calls and Mark, I'm sure as town supervisor you are as well. Um, it's very concerning and what we're seeing is we're, we're seeing a couple of events. Led to a couple exposures and then the exposure ends up passing it to another, another, uh, group or family or household. And then it goes through the household gradually and it's just, it's very, very, um, scary and worrisome to see. And local hospitals in Albany and Troy and Bainton, I'm starting to hear them. Show concerns about running out of ICU rooms, and this is not a concern. It's just local. This is regional. I, I have friends in other parts of, uh, northern New York and western New York. Um, they are having an even harder time than we are even in more rural locations. Um, that being said, it's great to see local county leaders working together. I got to watch a lot of the, um, um, the press conference with, um. Rensselaer County Executive Steve McLaughlin, Dan McCoy, uh, of Albany and the Schenectady, um, county executive. I forgot. His name, so I apologize, but I was really glad to see them talking together, crossing party lines to show this concern. Uh, and it is, it is a huge deal. There are some quotes that have come up recently. Dr. Fauci today was quoted by saying, in the first time in more than thirty years, I'm not spending Christmas holidays. With my daughter, Dr. Deborah Burks. This is not just the worst public health event. This is the worst event that this country will face, not just. From a public health side and the head of CDC, Dr. Redfield, the most difficult time in the public health history of this nation. Uh, this is scary stuff and this is real stuff. And for most of this experience, we have not seen it. We've been very lucky. We've watched it from afar. That is no longer the case. I would be willing to bet that every one of us can name. Three or four households or families that we know of in the village or in the town who have this right now. Uh, and here's where we're at. This is what the future is in store for us. I mean, we're still forty days away or so. We do have President Lex Biden taking the White House. The federal response will change. For whatever good or bad we'll see, but it is going to change from what we have right now. Vaccination distribution is coming, but we are likely half a year away at best for having. Uh, the larger amount of the community, uh, the communities across the state and country have access to the vaccine. Um, Vice President Pence said, and some comments recently, uh, he talked about this as a season of hope. Um, that's something that I disagree with, and what I wanted to very specifically say. Uh, I am calling on our community, uh, to embrace the notion of a season of sacrifice. No one wants to sacrifice. No one signs up to sacrifice, uh, typically. Because it's hard. It brings us to things that we don't want to do. Um, but we also understand that it's important and it's necessary. And it's a reflection of the time and it's a reflection of the needs that we have right now. So I am asking you guys in the village, in the town locally, to be responsible. About things right now to wear masks, social distance as much as you possibly can. Uh, to be safe, sacrifice the things that we want for our community for. Um, we may want to, you know, travel with families. We may want to go have large get togethers. Um, especially with this holiday season, but I'm asking you to consider sacrificing this because if we don't. And if this spreads more, it affects our community. It affects our children. It affects our schools. It affects the families who now have to. Figure out all the childcare for schools. It affects our healthcare professionals. Who are the warriors who are on this day in and day out, living within, um, the, the most concerning spot where they're always at risk. Um, and if you get COVID nineteen, please, please report all of the details of it. Do not hide things. We are hearing of situations where. People have not been forthcoming with all the information and that simply leads to more spread. Um, I understand there's fear involved. I understand there, there may be shame involved. I may, may have made a bad decision. That's why I got exposure. I understand that, but like you have to be thinking three, four, five weeks ahead. And where the branches of exposure is going to bring. We have to be keeping that in mind. Um. I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a teacher, so I see how this affects our students. Um, and I know that this, this whole twenty twenty has been so hard on our students for a lot of ways, but I also. I've been watching schools locally and regionally and across the state, um, get outbreaks and have to shut down. Um, and I see and I hear about the effects on, on individual families and it's so sad. And I know it's awful and it stinks and it's nothing that we want, but I just. I just want to stress that we have to embrace a season of sacrifice right now. Because that is what the times, uh, require, and that is what the situation requires because that will help us get through this better in the long run. Please be smart. That's all I'm going to say. Trustees, if you want to hop in and say anything on that, I, I, I spoke a lot. I'll definitely open that up for you.
Rob, I'd just like to say, um, this really has been a burden for our local bars, restaurants. And in some cases, some have closed up, uh, because of some, uh, visits by people who. They thought maybe tested positive. And we can all help by buying gift certificates or. Not just bars and restaurants, but all, all our local merchants to help them get through this pandemic and keep them operating into the new year.
That's really, really well put, Kevin, and you're right on. I mean, everyone knows the burden that this has been. Um, on, on so many businesses and communities and you're, you're just right on. Um, you're right on with that. And I, I've been. Glad to hear that there have been a lot of businesses who found out that there had been some exposure and immediately closed things down, cleaned things up. Got all the employees tested and waited and then reopened when everything was clear. Really, I mean, that's, that's what it takes, but you're right, Kevin. Um. If we, if we really, really care about this community, I think it makes sense to, to, to shop as locally as possible, get gift certificates and, and. And, and try to keep, uh, supporting them because when this is over. In six to eight months and we can sort of get back to some semblance of normalcy, we're, we're going to want them. Uh, right here where they were before this, uh, whole thing started.
Yeah, they've been so responsible themselves and reporting out what's happening and shutting down when they need to. I think that's. The best way to support them is to. You know, get, it's like you said, gift certificate where you can use it later on when the restaurants open up again and, you know.
Yeah. Any, any else trustees? Thank you for, uh, and, and enduring my, uh, my concerns there. We'll, uh, we'll zip through things now. Uh, appreciate it. Uh, people to be heard, uh, as always, and it can be about the chicken law, which, uh, is still open for public hearing or anything else. Um, please, um, begin with your first name and true address. Um, just to get an idea, is there anyone who would like to speak?
I would, Rob.
All right. Anyone else? All right, Harold, take it away.
Okay, as I've been bugging you about for the past five or six months. Where do we stand on the, uh, forcing people to clean up their sidewalks during a snowstorm or after a storm?
I have no new developments on that from the last meeting. It was something I had wanted to look into twice and things keep going crazy here. Like COVID and other things. So I unfortunately don't have anything else to add on that, but I will get in.
I just heard our local medical center is closed.
Oh, you mean not, um, Twin Rivers?
When, yeah, I just heard that.
I had heard that they had closed. I, I had just, I just heard rumor that they had closed, um, because an employee had been positive and they were doing. You know, like Deb said before, the, the, the clean down and the tests before the reopen, but I'm, I don't quote me in that because I don't have any official info on that.
Yeah. My, my concern is people won't shovel the sidewalks unless they're forced to. You know, just like wearing masks, unless you force them to do it, they're not going to do it.
Got it. Anything else?
Okay. That's it.
Um, Rob, just a quick special. Thank you to, uh, Renee on Facebook that has. Been really encouraging also people to decorate their houses to again, make our area look very festive. For the holidays.
Thank you, Marion.
And thank you, Marion. Your, uh, neighborhood is number one on the list for most decorated houses.
Uh, our neighborhood always does it, Mark. You know that. Kevin, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It looks great up there.
I think everybody's done a wonderful job up here. But we've always been that way.
Yeah, it's brightening people's spirits.
Yep.
Well, I think we all need a little brightening of spirits during this time.
Absolutely.
Definitely. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, uh, we're going to move on to our reports, treasure report. Denise, you want to, uh, hit this or does trustee want to hit this? Opening up my report in the other screen here. Denise, anything you want to point out?
I forwarded it that, that to you, Rob. I don't have a copy of it in front of me.
It's all right. We all have one here.
Okay.
We're going to quiz you on everything you say.
We have some financings coming up one this week, but next week. We completed the re-lebys for, um, the outside unpaid water and sewer and the unpaid village property taxes. We're now currently invoicing the December water bills to go out soon, which I'm sorry, I'm sure people won't be happy to hear that, but. Um, and pretty much that's it, unless anybody has any questions. And always, we're not, I, I will add something else. We really don't know where we're going. As far as the revenues for our sales tax. So just to be, and I say this every month, but just to be really diligent about what you are spending and what you have to spend. Keep it to a minimum and have approved. Thank you.
Unless anybody has questions, I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve the treasure report.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Deb. All in favor? Aye.
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 Post.
Aye.
Attention carries. Thank you very much, Denise, for all the work and for the reports. Uh, Chief Ash, are you still on the line?
I'm still here. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and, uh, a safe Christmas and follow up on what the mayor said about. The COVID, it's, it's a serious issue and we must, uh, really pay close attention to that. Um, for the total cause for, uh, November, we're a total of eighty nine. We're down a little bit and that's probably a result of, uh, of the COVID. Um, total cause for the year, one thousand three hundred and ninety nine. Um, total arrests for November were seven. And the total arrest for the year is eighty eight. Again, that's down from the previous year. Um, that's not to say that, um, we're not out there doing the job. It's just that I think, um. With COVID there, there's less activity going on in the village. I just, uh, want to refer to a few things. If you can ref, um, everyone can. See the service calls and the number or the type of service calls that were going on. They're pretty much consistent, uh, from month to month. Um, domestics and EMS calls are, are, um, still up on the top there. Um, and our arrests are been dealing with are just disorderly conduct, driving while intoxicated, um, petty larceny. Um, I want to bring your attention to on Saturday, November twenty eighth, um, we were having a, a number of. Locating of stolen vehicles in our village. About a month ago, um, this all started and it seemed like a pattern was, uh, was developing. Um, during that time, we were able to focus in on a, on a individual and then on the Saturday twenty eighth. We located another vehicle here in the village. Um, at that time, uh, a person called, a resident called it in based on a suspicious activity of an individual. Uh, it was located behind the sandbar. We called for the K nine unit from the city of Troy to come up, and at the same time we received information that. One of the individuals that we were focusing on was moving property from his house to a car. We set up on that, um, we pulled him over a short time after. Um, we located two stolen rifles in the vehicle. Um, later on that day, we executed a search warrant on his residence. And as well as, uh, search warrant on the vehicle, um, we located further stolen property. Um, he was arrested. His name is Nicholas Leonard. It was an individual that was on parole out of Vermont, moved into our village about six months ago. Um, there's an ongoing investigation with the New York State Police, the Rensselaer County Sheriff's Department. And the Vermont State Police, and we anticipate some additional charges to be lodged against them. Um, there is an update on the Unity House. Uh, we have two locations now that are offering space. Uh, for them to come in. We believe Sunday night, um, we'll have the final location that we can be able to discuss with you, um. We'll make an announcement next week of, of where it's going to be. I think at that time, Mayor, if we could put together a press release with the Unity House. As to their hours that they're going to be in. I think it's going to be a great addition to the, to the village and the town. Um, they're a very excited about, uh, coming up here and to assist. So, um, next week I think we'll be able to make that announcement as to where they're going to be. I also have a letter here from the North Housick Fire Department. I didn't get a chance to get it over to you, Mayor. I did meet up with Andy and I handed it over to him for his review. Uh, they're just requesting to upgrade their communication system. By, um, locating a, uh, antenna on top of, it's a repeater on top of the, um, the tower, the water tower. Um, I know it's going to have to be looked at and discussed by the village board. Um, what this will do is it'll give us, if we go out of, um. Power here in the village communication center here now at the police station, they'll be set up up there. power here in the village, communication center here now at the police station, they'll be set up up there for us to remove, uh, move operations up there without any hesitation. And I know in the past, when we've had some issues here in the village, we've been able to call upon North Housick because of their communication system there. So it's just going to upgrade the system. Um, they're going to be paying for the complete cost. There's going to be no cost to us. I'll send this letter over to your review. Um, if I could, Mayor, for maybe next month, we could put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we've talked, uh, who, who, I'm sorry, chief, who's that letter from?
Pardon me?
Who is the letter from?
The North Housick Fire Department.
Okay, yeah, we've, yeah, we've had a couple of discussions um with some folks who've been working on this and I think we've all been in favor of this, so um, it's just a matter of making it happen. But yeah, please forward that on. We'll get that on the agenda. Marie, can you make note uh for that to be on the agenda for January?
Got it.
And yeah, I don't believe I have anything else, but unless there's any questions that anybody may have.
No, Bob, I just want to say great job on uh the investigation and the arrest as far as Nicholas Leonard. Uh, I know you've been working on that for, for a few weeks and it came to fruition. You guys should be commended on the great work for that.
I, I think one of the, you know, we talk about, and we had this discussion in our um, our meetings here for the um uh, the board that we've created about suspicious activity. And when people pick up the phone and call on it, that's what helped break this case. An individual thought it was out of, out of place, uh, watching an individual get out of the car dressed in camouflage, even though it was hunting season. He had a rifle, but appeared to be carrying a rifle bag and a knapsack and then went up onto the railroad tracks and he thought a little bit about it and then felt that it was a need to give us a call. And once we got there, we discovered that the vehicle was stolen and we were able to react to it rather quickly. So I think the real person that we have to thank is that citizen that called us in right away.
No, that's great. I agree, Bob. You always reiterate that about, you know, if you see something suspicious, don't be afraid to, don't be afraid that that guy who says, I don't want to, I don't want to bother you. I mean, just little calls like that make a huge difference.
It does. And, and I just want to say again, a lot of people, you know, they try to call us in on our non-emergency number and as I tell them, no matter what, I had an elderly woman call me last week um on my cell phone and I don't mind being called on my cell phone, but I said to her, just dial nine-one-one and um and someone will respond. No one's going to be upset if it's not an emergency. If you dial nine-one-one, just dial the nine-one-one. And we're starting to get those calls of people that are being, receiving phone calls at their homes for uh the IRS or they're being called by an organization that's saying that they have to donate or they should donate. I know this is a time of forgiven. Um, but we, you have to be very, very careful as to what you're responding to over the phone and what information you're giving to people over the phone.
Especially when it's Apple calling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but in all seriousness, I, I agree with what Bobby said. You guys did really, really good work on that. Thanks to you guys.
And I want to thank you guys. And the only last thing is toys for tots. Uh, we're getting quite a, a gathering here with Marie is collecting them and getting them into the police station here. Um, I've been contacted by a couple of families um that are, that are looking for assistance and Marie and I will continue, we'll sit down and talk about that. Um, we are going to be starting to, we got one family that I know we are going to provide a meal to. Um, so we're gathering the donations. So if anybody else can think of anyone else that we can assist, please get ahold of Marie or myself and we'll, uh, we'll help make those arrangements.
Chief, I just had someone on Facebook ask about that very thing, so I'll get to that name later. I told them to reach out to you.
Yeah, you can give them my cell phone. It's the best way. They can get ahold of me on my cell phone. I'll respond, um, you know, bring them up to them or if they need a meal. I know, once again, the man in Kent has contacted me as Johnny always does and says, whatever you need. Um, but I've gotten some other financial donations as well from some other organizations that um have also said, if you need something, give us a call and they'll assist with it.
Also, I want to pass on, I've uh been working some weird hours, either late nights, early mornings and weekends um the past week or two. And each time I'm, I'm out driving, I'm, I'm glad to see uh patrol cars in different spots in the village um doing, doing their job. So I appreciate that. I know I just uh got the new parking municipal parking law to you guys. Um, we're working on that one issue with the um signage of that particular um road in the business district that we're having issues with and Neil and Andy are going to work on getting signs up and then I'll bring that up to you guys as well and make sure that's being checked on uh as well. So thank you.
That, just before I forget, because I had a call up here on Wilder Ave uh last Wednesday night, I went up there for a uh someone who was parking and he did bring out a point. There was a, a no parking sign, but underneath it, um, there was, it made reference to snow emergencies. It was just a temporary sign that was put up there. Um, and I meant to bring that to Neil's attention and I explained it to the guy. It's, it doesn't matter whether it's snowing or not. You can't park there. He understood. He was just running in quickly, but we, I, we just got to pay attention to where we put those no uh those uh snow emergency signs.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for chief?
But, Bob, I think the people up on Wilder at that location are a little sensitive about what happens up there because they've had so many different issues over the years. So I think that's why they called you right off the bat or they called me and then they, I called you.
And, and no, it was no problem whatsoever. I'm glad that they called us and I want to, I want them to continue to call us to bring it to our attention. Um, I, I, I wanted it just to make point that we just, I think we got to make sure where we put those signs. Um, because it, it's not that it's confusing, but it, it gives someone who wants to argue with me an argument um to say, why are you telling me not to park there when it's not snowing? Yeah, I think he was just being a wise guy as well. That's, that's understandable.
In that case, in that case, he's parking on the sidewalk anyway, which is not legal.
Right. Well, this was another guy that was parked down below that.
Oh, okay.
Parked there, but the, the other guy on the sidewalk, you're, you're, you're totally correct about that.
I'm pretty sure I brought up this, the signs before. Sorry, Rob.
No, go for it, Emily.
There, there's also like a gap in the signage with the poles. I obviously pay a lot of attention to the spot and I actually texted the chief myself and let him know about the three vehicles parked there, two on the sidewalk. Um, but the signage does need to get corrected because you have like a no parking that is just strictly no parking. Then you go to the next, like two poles down, then it says, don't park here for the winter. And then you go like another two poles down and it says, no parking. So I understand why the guy was saying it, but I, I hope we can change that because it's very dangerous to park on that side.
Marie, can you make note of that too? I want to um get that signage issue and the other one that we were talking about um over email uh moving in the next week or two.
Okay.
And, and Rob, I'll notify you next week in reference to that Unity House where they're going to be so that you can, you can um make a notification on Facebook. I think we got to publicize that as much as we possibly can.
Absolutely. All right.
Bob, as long as we're all here, um, the Eagles Club did contact me. Uh, as we're talking about parking, they are concerned, obviously they're located on First Street in town. They are doing a toy give out on December twentieth from eleven to one. So they wanted to make sure that you knew that there might be a little bit of car congestion on that street during those hours on that day. But that is what's going on.
That's a great cause. So we will, we'll probably go over, you know, if they need any assistance, you just tell them to give me a call. Something like that, we, that's, that's quite, you know, that's understandable.
Right. Okay. As long as you know.
Nope. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Anything else? If not, looking for motion to approve the police report?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Emily. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's?
And with your permission, I'm going to step away right now because I got to make a phone call to the state police.
That's fine. Thanks, chief.
All right. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Bye-bye.
All right. Um, Mark, code enforcement reports. Anything you want to highlight or stress?
No, just that, uh, you know, we are um due to the COVID, we haven't been doing the um biennial inspections, which is the whole house inspections, the only inspections I have been doing really are the uh pre-tenant inspections. I sneak in the biennial inspections when it, uh, you know, the situation allows for it. Uh, just doesn't happen that often. So that's why that number is down. Uh, you know, I'm not sure how many people are complying with the pre-tenant inspections, how much moving around is actually going on. That number seems a little bit low to me. It seems like I should be getting contacted. Some people are very faithful in contacting me. Uh, some people not so much, but um besides that, if there's any questions anytime on my report, feel free to give me a shout in the office.
Mark, there are a couple um names uh that we had discussed, geez, like a year or so ago that I, I, I've put back on my radar. So as we're coming out of COVID and returning back to normal life, I want to hit those uh right on. My apologies for not hitting those sooner.
Yeah, we just need to keep in mind that, uh, you know, our, our law does state that that biennial inspection will happen every other year. We will be going on to a year in March where we have, that's going to kind of set everything back. I'm not sure. You know, we're going to have to discuss when that time we go to open back up again, how we want to handle that uh as far as if we're just going to move everything back a year or, you know, what the, what the options are, how we should handle that, so.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Mark? Nice to see a couple of properties selling. Um, there was one property I want to ask about. We, one, one center street we keep seeing and we're hoping to see activity soon. Anything going on with that?
Kevin? No, I think it's still in limbo.
That's, that's a county issue. Just everybody is up to date. Uh, uh, when the county went to do their foreclosure on it, the owner filed for bankruptcy. That held everything up. Uh, and I think that may be where we're at, still held up in that process.
I know we had talked about this a couple of meetings ago, but limbo is where all of these things end up and limbo is this great huge location. There's so much stuff there.
I know there's been communication between the interested parties quite often, so it's not going away. It's just that it just can't happen because of the bankruptcy issue.
All right, unless someone has a question for Mark, I'll entertain a motion to approve the code enforcement report.
Motion.
Second. Second, I'll second.
Maria, I don't even know who that was. It was everyone at once on my end. Sounds good. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? All right. Well, that was all six. So we're all good. Carrie's, um, clerk, deputy clerk, report anything, Marie, you want to point out?
Taking my hat now. Um, no, again, Denise mentioned we're doing the utility bills for December. We're working on to getting those out end of the week, beginning of next week. So that's what we've been doing.
All right, great. Uh, it's nice to see eleven property changes uh this, uh, this past month. That's nice.
A lot of property changes.
Yep.
It's like as soon as the signs go up, it's a sale in contract sign follows the next day. It's great.
Yeah, I've seen that locally in my area too of the village. All right, looking for motion to approve the clerk, deputy clerk report?
I don't know.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
That was everybody. All right, good. All right, uh, sewer department report. I actually had initially thrown out that uh we wouldn't have one and then we got one. Did I send you guys the newer, the newer report? All right, I sent it to you and I forgot to get it myself. So any questions on that report? Uh, hearing none, looking for a motion to approve the report?
Motion.
Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
Thank you, Deb Bobby. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? All right. Carrie's, I'm glad to see um um where the income still continues to come in there. I didn't mean to, but I skipped over the highway DPW report and I know that um Neil just got back, but he did uh get in a brief report. Anything, Bobby, you want to mention there?
No, just the, the neck, Neil is back communication. Uh, and I do want to uh make a point that while he was away, Bruce Rawlings, uh, the deputy highway superintendent with Neil's absent, did an excellent job. He kept me informed on a pretty much daily basis what was going on. He did, they did a great job.
Yeah, I want to, I want to echo that sentiment. Absolutely awesome work Bruce did and just like you, Bruce and I were, were talking a lot. Um, and the lot was going on and uh he kept up and it was always that we'll be, we'll be good. We got it. And they always were good and got it, so.
Right. And, and Neil did get his back in service now. He was tested for COVID and tested negative. So he's back to work. So that's good news.
All right. Unless there's any questions on that report, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. I'll make that motion to approve the highway.
Thank you, Bobby. Seconds?
Second.
Thank you, Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, that's everybody. Great. Thank you. And we do not have a water report this month. We will have it uh next month, but I do have a little bit of update and information um later in the meeting about the repairs that have to happen. So we'll get to that uh later. All right, uh, we have minutes uh that were sent out by Marie for November tenth. Uh, unless you guys have any um changes we need to make, I will take a motion to approve the November tenth regular meeting minutes.
So moved. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, all in favor of repaying the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That was everybody. So that carries great. Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go in order of my screen for trustee committee reports. Kevin, you're sitting on top of my screen right now. So anything?
Um, no, not really. Just um thank you to those that turned out for the Santa visit. It was a non-contact visit. We rode around town and went to the nursing homes and we thank J C Tractor for providing the sleigh and reindeer and uh our uh Santa and the village police department and fire departments that took part in the event. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Deb, anything from you beside the uh waiting for, for me to get to sit down with you and walk you through everything?
Well, I just want to say that over the, the um the um, the small business Saturday and it was an excellent day. Um, and I noticed um my business and I think every, people are coming to town. I'm seeing new faces. People are coming to town to shop. They're coming from Cambridge and Bennington and um even farther away, um, because they're starting to hear about cool shops in Housick Falls and good restaurants and making it worth their trip. So that's really, that's really great. And um, let's just keep on promoting.
Awesome. Thank you, Deb. Bobby, anything?
No, I'm good.
All right, Craig, I got you next.
No, I'm good, Rob.
And Emily is bumped off my screen, but I know she's there somewhere. Anything, Emily?
No, you'll cover it in a little while.
Yes, I will. All right, great. Uh, with that in mind, we are moving on to old business. Uh, I don't have anything to report because I have not gotten that together. So um Bobby, if you have not heard from me that I have gotten a meeting uh for us together, you need to start like doing something like throw cookies at me or something. Anyone can throw cookies at me. I'm all good with that. So I'm looking for motion to table that uh so we can start those discussions um in, in term for next season.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily. Need a second for tabling. Thank you, Bobby. Uh, all in favor of tabling till next month? Aye?
Aye.
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 Post? Carrie's, Marie, every time you see me, yell at me about that, please. Okay, new business, page one. So we still have our public hearing open. Uh, does anyone else want to speak on the chicken law before we close public hearing? Andy, if we close the public hearing, does that prevent us from opening it next meeting should we want to?
Uh, yes, if you close the public hearing, it is closed and then procedurally, it's just for deliberation uh between the trustees.
Okay.
If there are any substantive changes. If there are any substantive changes to the text, well, then it would be renoticed in a further public hearing.
Okay. So at this point, trustees, what are, what are you, what are you feeling about the, uh, the chicken law right now?
I I still have concerns about the multifamily part of the, uh, new law. Other than that, I'm for the chicken law being presented, but I'm not sure I am for it as written.
Okay.
I kind of agree with Kevin's sentiments, uh, pretty much in the same. Uh, I don't like the idea of the multifamily dwellings, uh, being allowed and but I am in favor of the chicken law, but I think we need to fine tune it a little bit and maybe table it at this point and then do a little more work on it. And if we have to have another, have the other, another public hearing on it in a later date.
All right, um, any other trustees want to speak up?
Oh, yeah, I have a question. Um, can we, if we just take out the part, well, we can't just take it out. If we just put a part, a thing in that says no multifamily housing, does that change everything and we have to go back to um, have another public hearing?
I think, Andy, procedurally, we would make the changes, notice them, and next month we would have a, a, a further hearing on it.
Uh, take a little bit longer than that. So what, this is all under the municipal home rule law and very specific requirements that if there's any, uh, substantive changes made to the proposed local law, that would include removing some provisions that have already been put in there or changing them, particularly in terms of multifamily housing. Then those changes would need to be made and the, the new proposed local law probably numbered three A, or however you'd want to do it, would need to be introduced at a meeting and then another public hearing scheduled. So it's almost as kind of restarting that procedural process of introducing it because you've made a substantive change to the law. So it could be one more meeting. The public hearing wouldn't necessarily be in January. It could be reintroduced in January and an additional public hearing in in February.
Thank you. I also have another question because I'm still sort of new. When you guys were putting this law together, I imagine that you looked at what other villages?
Yeah, we looked at a couple of villages and a bunch of town, uh, laws, um, in the near region and further parts of New York, yeah.
And what did they have?
That's how we started it.
I figured, but, um, what would, what did those look like? Did they have multifamily? Do you remember? Or did you hear of any that had problems with multifamily and they had to change that part?
You know, I don't recall, and I I wish Vanessa was still on because she was part of that. Bobby, I know you were there. Um, I don't recall that multifamily is coming up in the sample laws, but I do recall us talking about it and making a specific decision to try to include that in some form.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's actually been, been a while, so I I must admit, I I I can't recall exactly what transpired, but, um, yeah, I don't remember much discussion regarding the multifamily dwellings previously. Um, but the other laws we did look at, I mean, we just went through kind of in decided, took out what we didn't want and left in what we did want.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at. And so it came about what we have now with Andy's help and.
Right, and if. I guess, my guess would be on that, that Jason and Sarah were heavily involved in this in the beginning.
They own and live in a multifamily. Maybe they had something to do with that.
That would make sense, and that group setting we would have want, we would have wanted to make that happen in some form.
Well, you can always change it to owner occupied, uh, properties rather than.
Right, that I'm not, that I'm not opposed of to. If the owner lives in the, one of the, one of the, one of the dwellings, I don't have an issue with that.
That makes a lot more sense.
My concern is someone, as Kevin mentioned, someone who lives in uh, Scaticoke, who owns five apartment buildings in the village and you know, then in every one of them have chickens and, you know, I'm just, they're just, that's a a bad example, but that's where I'm coming from. I I agree. You know, I think if someone's living in it, they're not going to let things go the wrong, in the wrong direction. They're not going to rely on Mark to be the enforcing agent. They're not going to be the enforcing agent with their tenants.
Craig, Emily, anything you guys want to share?
More work on market.
No, I'm sorry to cut you off. I didn't mean to cut you off there.
No.
No, 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 no.
So, so Rob, my, my only comments are, I mean, I I think owner occupied multifamily would be a fine change. I don't, it's not going to make a difference to me either way. I'm, I am uh, begrudgingly, I guess, would support the law. I think a lot of work has gone into it, and that's one of the reasons I would support it. I don't think there's a better option for a chicken law if we're going to have one. Um, so I'm not too worried about, you know, with, is it exactly right or is it ninety percent good enough? I think my concern is that we're going to regret this. And and I don't know why, but if every board meeting from now till June has discussions about chickens, I'm going to regret this. I don't know any other way to put it. And it's had, we've had chicken discussions the last few, and tonight's been quite a bit of it. I don't think it goes away by just passing this law. That's, that's my concern.
Understood, and most of this, uh, discussion was supposed to be tonight because it was the public hearing about it. So I understand your points well taken, and I know that, you know, that it may mean that there are some complaints about the chicken laws if it ends up getting passed, but um, end of the day, I'm okay with that. That's why I'll be in support of the chicken law when I think we're, we're good with the language. Emily, anything you want to add? And thank you, Craig, as well.
I'm in favor of, or of getting it right the first time. I'd rather have it the way we really want to see it to be able to enforce it and and make it work because the goal is for it to work. So that's my thought.
Well, there is one positive to this. Someone on, uh, line is commenting that they, uh, enjoy hearing Bobby say chicken law. So there you go, Bobby. Andy, um, it sounds like we are all, it sounds like the majority of us want to make that adjustment to the law. So with that kind of being the, the, what seems like the board's direction, would you recommend we close a public hearing or leave it open? How do you think we should move from here? Because it sounds like we're kind of all in agreement that we want to adjust the multifamily language, but everything else seems we're pretty good with.
Right, so procedurally, I would recommend the public hearing be closed. That proposed substantive amendment to the law be reviewed by the board, and when you're comfortable with that language, it'll then get reintroduced and we'll just notice a new public hearing.
Okay, so it sounds like for the next meeting, we'll have the, the new wording, uh, ready and out, and we'll notice it. And then February, we'll have our public hearing um, on the, the changes and assuming all is good there, we can either approve it as soon as February or go back to the drawing board or just can it completely and, uh, Craig will sleep better at night. So any of those are fine. So you said your recommendation is close public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So would anyone like to offer that motion?
I'll make the motion that we close the chicken law.
Second.
I'm going to make that, I'm going to make that ringtone for my, uh, phone. All right, we have the motion and the second. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's, uh, you, uh, opposed? I don't know if I heard Craig.
I, that was an I.
All right, great. Uh, uh, I'm getting some live comments on Facebook, and this is fantastic. All right, so it is closed. Uh, in which case it sounds like I'm also looking for a motion to table the chicken law. Is that right, Andy? What we would do next?
No, at, at this point, you don't need to take any action on that. The, it's within the board's discretion to make changes and then reintroduce.
So we will move on. We will not act on the two resolutions that we had prepared. Correct, board? All right, then I want to move on to the, uh, water treatment plant equipment repair. Um, so we had, and I'm, I'm trying to see which file, uh, this is, uh, trustees. Uh, one second here. I mean, controller is in the way. I have about a thousand tabs opened up here. Uh, file number nine, trustees is the one that was sent in the email. This is the, um, quote to fix, um, uh, some, Emily, do you know the technical stuff about the skids and and what's going on there? I know that uh, about a day or two ago, uh, Jim told me it got to the point where he had to shut down half and we're running off with just the other half in a reduced way, and that made me very concerned. And if we didn't have the board meeting tonight, when he, I think he told me this yesterday or the day before, yeah, I probably would have authorized an emergency spending, but Emily, do you have any other details on it?
I do not.
Okay. Um, all I know is that this has been something that Jim's been asking for for a while. He had the quote back in October. We wanted to bring it up at the November meeting, but we only had one quote, so he went out and tried to get more quotes. Um, the, the water operator has reached out to a couple contractors, um, in the region. Um, and I think even across state lines, we did not get any more, uh, quotes. So this is the only quote. Our guys are good with it because, uh, we've done work with them before. They've done work in our plants. Um, and the option on, on there is option two, which is what we would want, which would be a three thousand one hundred and sixty dollar expense. Um, at this point, i- it's, it's a, it's pretty much a very specific need now because, um, the, the pressure is, is something about higher pressure causing a social issue, so we shut down part of the equipment and we're still running, but it's not as optimal as it should be.
Any motion?
I, so, yeah, I would, I would take a motion to approve the, um, uh, the FBI mechanical quote specific to option two and also making a note that we, a good faith effort was made to receive more quotes from multiple companies, but we're not able to.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily and Craig. Whoever want to give that to Marie is fine. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Carrie's great. Thank you. I'll make Jim happy. Jim and Josh will be very happy. All right. Uh, the next thing, the resolution regarding the Woodsboro bailout program. Um, Andy, do you want to quickly summarize, uh, this while I get it up on the screen?
Sure, so these are the five properties that the village has acquired to date through the Woodsbrook Home Buyout Program. Those properties were, uh, acquired at the end of twenty nineteen that, uh, during the uh, twenty twenty-one fiscal year, uh, these fell through the cracks and tax bills were actually issued to the village for those. Obviously, they are now on the exempt list as village owned properties. These were caught at the county level. They've made the correction at the county, and this is a resolution just confirming that those five properties, uh, are now on the exempt list and that, uh, there will be no further real property tax due on them during village ownership.
Thank you, Andy. And again, the properties are listed there in the whereas twenty-seven Elm Street, Hundred Ten Church, Seven Hall Street, Five Hall Street, and Three Hall Street, all properties that we've acquired uh, through the Woodsboro bailout program. Any questions on this, trustees?
Uh, none of that specifically, but the, um, we have a plan for taking those properties down.
Yeah, the plan had been to do it, uh, to do the demo together in the fall. Um, we just got, Andy, we just did the extension go through. We got the extension.
Yes, the, the state did grant a one-year extension because of the delay due to COVID.
Yeah.
Agreement runs through October of twenty twenty-one. So, Rob, I think it's the village's plan to to work on demolitions, uh, after the winter.
Yeah, it'll be after the winter and it will hopefully be with one or two more properties that we're going to try to acquire in the next three to six months.
Uh, will the village be doing that demolition or is that, uh, work being done by a private contractor?
No, we, um, we budgeted to have a private contractor do the air monitoring. Um, but we, we also budgeted in the Woodsbrook funds through the grant, um, training costs for our village employees to do that. If we end up taking a larger building, um, that's something that we've actually set aside money to have someone else come and do because that would be outside of what we can do.
I just worry that, I know a lot of times we're so shorthanded as it is, then to bring all our resources towards tearing houses down, what that's going to do to our, our manpower and our ability to do other work around the village.
Well, the one nice thing about, um, waiting an extra year is that we don't have the sewer project. We don't have the highway garage projects. Uh, that were all in, in motion this summer and fall. So the, the, the nice thing is we won't have those other products lingering. Um, but your point is, is well taken.
Yeah, because, um, we tore down the wa- old waterworks building and that's still sitting there in a heap for the last couple of years, so.
And ironically enough, that's, uh, something we're looking into with one of the Greenway Grants to get that taken care of as well. Yeah, point taken.
And also addressing buildings to be torn down, Rob. We definitely need to address the mechanic street property that is now is ours, that the bank turned over to us a couple of years ago.
Back.
Yeah, um, you can, you can look into the cellar now, pretty, and and Mark's aware of it, uh, the foundation is, is, is definitely gone on one side of the building or not totally, but and the mold is on the windows. You can see the mold driving by. That needs to be addressed. I know we may have been off more than we can chew by accepting that money from the bank for us to take over the property, but we need to do something with that sooner than later.
All right, Marie.
Uh, you can see it. Just, you don't need to stop. You can look and see it.
All right, Marie, can you add that to my list this week? Thank you, Bobby. Any other, any other questions on this resolution? So this is the resolution confirming exemption of parcels acquired by the village through the Woodsbrook Home Buyout Program from real property taxation. Um, Andy summarized the whereas statements, so now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Who's It Falls in regular session. Duly convenience follows. One, the Board of Trustees hereby confirms the classification of parcels acquired by the Village of Who's It Falls through the Woodsbrook Home Buyout Program as exempt from real property taxation and further directs that the village treasurer perform all duties necessary to implement the tax billing correction for village fiscal year on twenty twenty-one for all such parcels acquired by the village. Need a trustee to offer this resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Craig, and needs a second.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Roll call vote, please, Marie.
Okay, trustee Pine.
Yes.
Yes, trustee O'Malley, yes. Trustee Alter.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis, absent. Trustee Marpy.
Yes.
Yeah, Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you.
All in favor. Thank you.
All right, let me, uh, get caught up here in my, um.
Rob, before you move on, you went by the, uh, motion to sign the retainer for Roma and Wallens.
Oh, I, I redid the order, uh, in the agenda, so that is coming up, but I moved it, uh, in a couple, but yeah, please make sure I get that. Uh, next one we have is, um, discussing, um, some various grants. Um, we have, uh, through Barton and La Judas. Uh, we have the Woodsbrook Flood Mitigation Grant, the Who's a River Greenway Northern Trailhead Grants and the Who's a River Greenway Waterworks Road. All projects in motion, all projects I think that are slated to be, slated to be finished within like the next year, I think. Um, so we are, they are out of the, um, great administrations, uh, funds. They have, uh, sent us a proposal for, uh, setting aside seventy-five hundred for them to continue doing administrative services on these grants. Um, it's the same type of, um, being all proposals we've done before. Funds would likely come through the small, uh, cities funds that we have. Any questions, thoughts, comments on that?
Would that, uh, cost include writing a grant or would the writing of the grant be, uh, extra money? I know they said it would be over and above for certain, uh, duties they performed.
Meaning if they, if they went for additional grants?
No, under that seven thousand dollars is there, uh, does that include writing a grant or would that be extra?
It includes whatever writings and reports they would have to do specific to these grants, but I don't think it includes any extra, um, gray applications. I don't know if that answered your question, Kevin.
No, not really, but, uh, I just wonder what, what they have to do with the rest of the year that would include seven thousand dollars.
Well, with, um, with the northern. with the Northern Trailhead, um, there are some more meetings and the actual work has to be done. Um, and that's going to involve, I wish Neil was on. I can't remember. I feel like that's going to have um uh, does some of that go up for bid on that one? Marie, do you by chance remember that?
No.
Um, if I can interject, the only thing I do know with talking with Rob Murphy is that he has spoken with Daniel Dwyer recently. They need to uh adopt the new project scope because it has been changed a couple of times.
Yeah.
So I think it's moving forward and I believe the seventy-five hundred is normal. I mean, that's what they charge in order to keep this whole thing on target and moving forward, but I know it would not include writing any new grants. That would totally be under a different a different.
Another proposal, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I would like to entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign uh this proposal.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Craig. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? I think that was everybody. And I think that, Marie, that passed, right? I don't know if I heard anything opposed.
No, you passed.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh sewer project, um, just a quick discussion, um trustees, this is file number twelve. Uh, basically, and I know I was about to turn my whole monitor and then I realized my whole screen would uh would turn. Oh, there's a way to rotate this. There we go. I can use computers. Um this is the sewer project contract number two that we have with J Squared. We're the, near the finish line with all the paperwork. The original contract price was one million one hundred and fifty-three thousand after change orders and all the various shenanigans that we went through with the uh additional work as well as some reduction in prices from work that ended up not being done. Um, they're looking to have the uh final price be uh one million two hundred and thirty-three thousand and seventy. Uh, Neil has been through these numbers and gave it the thumbs up, and from what Andy has said, once we approve this, it allows them to do their final um, the final works, whatever has to happen. Andy, Denise, feel free to correct me in any of that.
Yeah, what this does is it's the final, if you will, closeout for the J Squared payment. Uh, which I think, Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, is needed for long-term financing for the sewer project.
Uh, right, we've included that total amount um in order to pay them off. I believe it's retainage and maybe one other small payment. If, you know, there are ex, if there was extra money budgeted that is included in the financing, it just would not be at the time of closing. Pending the approval of the final contract amount. Which is Thursday. So if it's not, if it's less than what it was, then it won't be financed. They're well aware of the situation, so.
So I think this is just kind of a business as usual, get this thing done so that the processes can continue, Denise.
So it can close out, correct?
Okay. Um, so unless there's any questions, I'm looking for a motion to accept the final contract amount for uh the J Squared contract number two on the sewer projects.
Motion.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, everybody. Uh, further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, great. Uh, and before I forget, Denise, you get the award for best background. I love the tree in the background. Unfortunately, I just have like a white wall and a strange glare on the top of my, my dog. Um, we have a, a motion to, I'm looking for motion to sign the retainer renewal. Um, for uh Roma Wallens Gold and Mino LLP and the Village Music Falls for the term of January twenty-first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. This would be um, uh, we've been using Elaine Gold for um all of our labor, um, uh, I don't know, issues is the wrong term, but she's our expertise and she has been for a long time and um, she has been amazing and consistent and uh so has everyone in the firm that I've had experience working with, so I'm all about this. Um, anyone want to add anything to that? All right, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to uh sign the retainer renewal.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it. I need a second.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, thank you. Um, if any of you guys have had the uh, the luxury of working with uh Elaine, she is just brilliant, brilliant lady, um, knows her stuff, and uh she's often teaching a lot of the Nikon classes uh for, for things in her field, so they're awesome. Um, so we have the motion, we have the second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Rob, do we have any, do we, excuse me, I mean, i- is she our only recourse? I mean, she, is, we have any other options? I'm just asking.
You know, I've honestly, I've never looked for another option. Um, she's always been solid with her knowledge base and I, I actually worked with someone else in the um, i- in the firm who's also been quite good. Um, I don't know of anyone else around here who, who handles uh this side of things. I'm sure there are, but I don't know. I know Denise, you guys in the office have always been very comfortable with the, with them, right?
Yeah, I, Elaine's been on board, I want to dare say, close to twenty years at least. We have had other firms. Um, she's always got the village um utmost in what she does for us, and I can't say enough about them.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in the same boat.
Yeah, I'm sure there's other firms there, but she's familiar with both of our union contracts, um, how we work. Um, and her price, I think maybe goes up fifty dollars a month, um, maybe every three years. So I think she's well within the ballpark, and she's very helpful. If you call her, she's right there.
Yeah, yeah, every time. Okay, so we had a few people vote, um, so I, let me just ask that again for all in favor for, for this. One more time, that was an I for me.
Aye.
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 Okay, I think Kevin had voted I previously, so I think we're all good there. All right, great, thank you. Um, so uh, what, uh, the next item, I don't even know what I have shared right now. I don't have the agenda item shared right now, do I?
No.
Let's fix that. Well, I tried to fix it, but it didn't let me. Oh, it is, man, what is the deal? Is the, is the PowerPoint uh shared right now?
Yeah, you've got new business. There you go.
I'm sorry. Um, boy, it's all out of order and everything. That's crazy. There we go. Okay. Um, so we had a uh local resident uh reach out and ask um, if the board would consider refunding um uh refunding the late fee. Uh, the, what happened with the situation was the water bill was sent out. Um, then the late fee was sent out. Um, she came in uh explained to the village office personnel that she was confident she had left it in the drop box in the lobby. Um, she reached out to me. I said I would look into it. I dropped the ball, enormous amounts. Um, picked it back up a couple of months later, uh recently got all the details. It basically comes down to twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, some of the conversations um with uh the village office members were probably a little bit uh more abrasive than they needed to be. Um, but the basic gist is that she sent me a picture of the credit card receipt um that you, or not credit card, she said, the, the check receipt that you have when you um fill out a check and put it in. She had it dated and done the right way, just for somehow somewhere, it's, it's being stayed, it got lost somewhere. We're not sure why, but she's asking that the twenty-three uh dollars and ninety-five cent late fee um be refunded.
Did we cash or check?
We did not have record of receiving it in the office. Um and um, as far as I can tell from, from speaking with the office, we've not had another situation where this has come up. Um, but that is the ask. Um, I, I do feel awful about dropping the ball for so long. Um, and I can't remember, I'm actually grabbing my water, um, water bill law that we conflict with every two or three months. Um so the, the basis for refunds are specifically limited to air and meter reading, meter failure, or air and paying the bill twice or otherwise incorrectly. So I think Andy would if the board wanted to do the refund, I feel like, would this count in what we're allowed to do according to the law?
He has a cancelled check? He shows you a cancelled check?
No, no, and, and Marie, feel free to, and Denise, feel free to, to hop in with more details. It was, uh, it was, for, for me, it was a picture of the, the checkbook, um, what is it, the carbon copy? The carbon copy. I've been looking for that term for like three hours. It was a picture of the carbon copy with the date.
We never saw a check from the April bill, which is the bill she thought she had paid. We got this, we never got a check for that until um, October.
Did, did we ask for a cancelled check? I mean, if you have one, she said, she basically um thought we lost it.
She said she had brought it into the lobby when we instituted that new policy with COVID. Put it into the locked mailbox, which is checked every day. It's locked. All the payments are brought into the office. And she said she put it into the black mailbox. We never received it. We have not had any other issues with anybody not having their bill paid when they put the um payment and check in the mailbox.
Can I ask a crazy question? Do we have, I mean, I, I hate to get into that, but do we ever, we have video of coming into the building, right? I mean, she, I mean, we, we would know whether she came into the building or not.
We uh, the, the video would have had to have been checked within a certain amount of time and it wasn't.
Oh, because it erased.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I don't believe she crawled until June. It was, it was a good month after she had that she had put it in the mailbox.
So, 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 okay, has, the bill's been paid, right? Except for the late fee, right?
No, she actually did pay the late fee as well. Once, when she went to pay it back, she paid everything and now she's just asking for the late fee to be refunded.
Disputing it from the very get-go.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I look at it this way, if, if my credit card payment didn't go through and I have a track record of being on time and making my payments, I know the credit card company would waive, will work with you on stuff like that. Right? I mean, it's not like we're being asked to waive the whole water bill or anything. It's a late fee. In the interest of good faith, that's twenty-three dollars. It's not going to make or break us, and whether we're right or wrong, it just seems like the simple thing to do is waive the late fee, retroactively cut a check and move on. Who could say no? Well, I mean, it's twenty-three dollars. I don't think we should spend much more time on it either than you know, it's either yes or no, right? We're going to do it or we're not, whether she's right or wrong.
Well, the other thing is, is that she's really wanting that twenty-three dollars back, and it's only twenty-three dollars. She either really needs that twenty-three dollars, or she's just being a pain in the neck. I'm doing it on principle. But if she needs it, she's making a big deal about twenty-three dollars, then probably she should have it.
Any other comments?
Do we give refunds anymore? Or we just do credit?
Uh, I actually spoke with Denise about this, and the preference would be for us to write the check back to her. Um, because the way it works with the systems, it's easier that way, right, Denise?
Okay.
Andy, uh, am I correct that this falls under something that uh would be allowed to be refunded?
So I'll, I'll give you my thought on that, which is this is not a situation where someone's disputing the amount of the water bill. This is a late fee issue and a dispute regarding dropping that uh at Village Hall. I'll note that the water law does allow for a refund or an abatement when any charge of the village has been paid twice or paid incorrectly. Now, I don't know what that term would be, would mean, how it would be interpreted, but the law does say that a refund is allowable, certainly within the board's discretion, when any charge of the village has been paid incorrectly. So if you want to classify this as the situation where the, the payment was made incorrectly, that, that, I, I would think that that's this situation, certainly up to the board's discretion. But we'll make it clear on the record, this is, you've been very clear on requests for refunds of water bills or part of it, whether it's due to a leak, whether it's due to um, you know, a situation where they, they did not have the meter properly installed. Those, the board has been very clear, refunds would not be allowed. This is a somewhat different fact situation, or whether that falls within the charge of the village having been paid incorrectly. Again, that, that's within your discretion.
All right, trustees, what are you thinking? I'm looking for, I guess, either a motion to um do the refund or a motion opposite refund.
I'm not opposed to issuing the refund. I'll make a motion to issue a refund.
Second.
All right, thank you, Craig and Kevin. Uh, any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, it passes. All right, thank you, trustees, for considering that. Um, last bit here, looking for a motion to approve the appointments of a local registrar, Marie O'Neill, for an any deputy registrar, Judy Vanderkirk. Vandercar, I don't know why I said Vanderkirk, sorry, geefer. This is what happens when you pass a two-hour mark in a meeting. Um, and sub-register Denise McMahon for another term retroactive from April twenty twenty till March thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. This would have been done during the reorganizational meeting that was postponed due to COVID nineteen. So I'm looking for that motion.
Motion.
Thank you. I think that was Emily and Deb. Yep. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, Carrie's great. Thank you. Uh, trustees, is there any other business you want to bring up to the board? Hearing none, and before I get to the last motion, um, I do hope uh everybody has a very safe um, holiday season, handle it responsibly, please, please, please as best you can. Happy Hanukkah to those of you who are celebrating Hanukkah in a couple of days. Merry Christmas to those of you who are celebrating Christmas. Uh, best to you and God, I hope twenty twenty-one is better than twenty twenty. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much. This meeting is officially adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.
Happy holidays.
You too.
You too.
From the Eastwick Press, all you people, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Same to you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Doug, Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Doug, you too.
Merry Christmas, Doug.
Leslie, if you're still here, I, I just saw your comments now, Leslie. So you heard all this stuff. Um, and Leslie does pass on the thanks for the refund, so I'm glad Leslie that you saw that. And I think Leslie, I know you commented on checking the cameras, but the cameras had already overwritten um the uh, the space because the date was, went past, so. Um, all right, so again, Leslie passes on her thanks. All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Bravo. Bravo. I just sent you a text.
Got it. We'll talk tomorrow. Got it. We'll talk tomorrow about that.
Okay, okay.
I would, I would assume so, but I I'll I'll look into that tomorrow.
I just wanted, just wanted to remind you if you didn't, that's all.
Looking forward to talking to you, Rob.
Yes, Deb. Hopefully next couple of days. Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Bye, all.